Discuss and give input to item number four, which was a discussion of the coronavirus and possible impacts on city events. So we're going to move that to item number one tonight. And Mayor, I have your name by that, so I'm going to let you give an introduction to that. And then I know that I have people here to speak. I believe that Ms. Walker has someone here to speak if needed. And we'll hear from others.
Yeah, I mean, I mostly want to hear from others, too. And I have heard from a lot of people. But, you know, I've been in talks with the state and the health department up there. They are having a press conference at 5:00 today with a protocol on how you can get tested. And I think that's been one of the biggest concerns is that there just really has not been a way to get tested. And there are kits at the different testing places like Quest and LabCorp, but there has to be a physician to administer the test. And that's kind of been the roadblock and why there hasn't been any testing. So just, you know, leaning on the conservative side, you know, we probably do have a lot more cases than have been reported, which is zero. So anyway, I have been, you know, talking about this for the last couple of weeks. So I have gone through every single emotion that you can go through. And it's the last thing I would ever want to recommend, not just as a business owner. I mean, this is a very profitable weekend for us, really second to Christmas. But I do think that with our population, with a high percentage of elderly, and, you know, we have vendors coming from all over the country, and we just really need to do the responsible thing. So.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and invite Mr. Lang Floyd up to -- he's going to give us some bullet points. And, Mr. Floyd, yeah, please come up here and you'll sit at this seat. And I'm going to also let you know that there's anybody else that you want to invite up here? Because we need to hear, you know, we want to hear the pros and cons.
Okay. And they may -- we've got several members from the Arts and Crafts Festival Committee and the foundation that are here. And we all came today in a spirit to discuss and not debate this issue because we know it's -- that's what we've got to do, is kind of reach some kind of common ground, some kind of agreement that we can all work with. And that's why we're here, is to discuss it with the council and the mayor about it. I want to thank some of the members of the council that reached out to us to talk, to let us know that this was coming up. And we've got information based on the limited amount of time that we've had to be able to try to check into it. Mayor, I happen to be in Montgomery again this week. Saw you up there, I guess it was last week?
Yes.
And I was up there again this week, and I heard right before I left this morning that the, both the house and the center appropriated, I think, a total of $1 million toward this for public health to try to get these test kits out. So the state is taking a look at that. Of course, it's going to be time before it gets down to us. There are comments and rumors running rampant around the state house up there about this. I had heard, and I may be talking out of school, that maybe there was a, one positive test up in Huntsville. I've also heard that wherever it is throughout the country, it's generally in large cities, generally around hospital and healthcare areas, because that's where the sick people go. And so that's where they go to get their information, to get their help. We don't know exactly how many there are out there. We don't know what the impact it could be, but I wanted to, we wanted to give the council as much information as we had gotten, both pro and con, so that a decision could be made. It's not going to be, we don't know whether it's going to be the right decision or not. Unfortunately, we're having to foretell the future here. But I wanted to let, I wanted to let the city know that what we've got is, the festival, if it determines that we need to cancel it, that is not a decision that the foundation takes lightly. It's not a, it is a heartbreaking, quite frankly, decision. And I've got some more information on that in just a minute for you. But it, we will do whatever we agree is in the best interest for the city, for the citizens of Fairhope, for the festival, for the downtown merchants, for the artists, everything, taking everything into consideration. That's what we want to do, is work with you to do that. I wanted to let you know, just so the council knows the impact of what this will be if we do not go forward with the festival. First, and this is probably really minor, because I'm only talking about the foundation or the festival, but it will basically be about a little over $10,000 negative impact to the festival itself, money that we've expended that we will not be able to recoup. So that's something we need to consider. I can give you some of the numbers of where that comes from. We've got over 200 artists that are signed up. So far, we've heard from two. One that has a concern about traveling because of the coronavirus. Another one happens to be visiting somebody in Italy and has now been quarantined over there because of what's going on in Italy. And he called and said, "I cannot, will not be able to come because I won't be released in time." But we also have talked to people throughout the county, and we've learned that some of the economic impact this could be from a large scale is, we're one of the first big festivals that's going to take place in Ballin County. We've got the Strawberry Festival coming up in Loxley. We've got the Alberta Sausage Festival coming up. And I know that's not a primary concern to the city of Fairhope, but we all are, you know, Ballin Countyans, too, and we don't want to do anything that's detrimental to them. I think they're going to be looking at what the city of Fairhope does, and they're, and they may take the lead of how we go about this, assuming factors don't change it. And if we decide not to go forward, there's a likelihood, there could be a domino effect of this with the other, with the other festivals. Also, keep in mind that they've still got people coming to the beach to spring break, that if this, some of these festivals start canceling, some of these events, a lot of the people that come in and bring an economic engine to our, to our community, that will have a downside to that. We don't know if we had an outbreak of the coronavirus, that it would be the result of someone here from the festival. It could be someone that was just staying at one of the hotels and happened to be here that weekend. We may have it anyway. So unfortunately, these are decisions we're all going to have to work through, I mean, issues we're all going to have to work through in order to reach our decision. But I just want the council to be thinking about that and understanding that, even though from a global impact we've got that, we also have individuals, we've got local merchants that, like some of the restaurateurs, that say, "They make enough on this weekend of arts and crafts that carries them all the way through to the summer so that they can continue to keep their business viable." We've got the food trucks for the food vendors. It is a huge economic engine for them, to get them in, you know, if we do it, if we cancel, then they may not be able to go to another festival because that festival may also cancel. So it's, it's a lot of issues that we've got to take into consideration. Obviously, the health and safety of our people is number one. We all understand that. We don't want to do anything with our festival that could cause a health or safety hazard with someone. And we are well aware of the demographics as far as age of the people that will come to the festival, that may be in the, in the area. I hit one of the representatives this morning, tell me, he asked me how old I was, and I told him I was 63. And he said, "You're in trouble." And he asked someone else, and they were in their 40s. He said, "Well, look, I'm 70." He said, "They say everybody in the 60s are high risk, everybody in their 80s are high risk." He said, "I'm in that window, I'm not at risk," jokingly. But we don't, the point is, we don't know who it's going to affect. We don't know what it's going to do, but we do appear to have a population here that could be affected by this. I know there's been some questions about, and I want to just go ahead and throw this out, about, "Well, we'll reschedule. We'll just postpone it and reschedule." The logistical issues for rescheduling are very, very difficult. Number one, you cannot have a festival without artists. Artists travel. Most of our artists, not all of them, but a lot, but most of them are on a circuit. And they'll be coming from Florida, they'll be coming through this area. Some of them will stop off at a Mississippi festival that's going to be in a week or two after hours. Some head on into the Houston and other parts of Texas area. They're not just here, they could come back two or three weeks later. So we don't know if we could get the artists back. That's 200 artists that are the, it's very important, that's what brings the people in. So we don't know if we could get it, get them back. We don't know how the schedule would work with the city on being able to get another, another weekend. I think that probably, probably would be the easiest thing we could do, is to work with the city to get another weekend. But still, does that work with artists? What, for lack of a better term, what conflicts or what competition would we run into? We would need to work around. We certainly don't want to have the festival the weekend if they have hangout, or if they have another event a month or two down the road for us to deal with that. Weather is a big issue. I don't think June and July would be a great time for us to have an outdoor festival in Fairhope, because then we've got to deal with heat issues, especially for the elderly. So the, and then, once we get too far, and they're telling us that, in New York, they're saying it could be September before they know that they're, in essence, out of the woods on this matter. Well, by July, we're already working on a next year festival. So for us to say we could reschedule it for April or May, number one, we don't know what this issue may be. It may be even worse than it is now for us to try to do that. So I think if we don't have it next weekend, not this coming weekend, but the next weekend, if we don't have it then, it's probably, I don't want to say impossible, because nothing's impossible, but it's, it's getting close to it, that we would just need to look at canceling for, for the year and start gearing up for the next year. We can do that, we will do that, we will have it again next year, whether we have it this year or not, we're going to have it next year. And, but I don't know if we would be able to reschedule it. Now, I want to mention that, like, as I said earlier, decisions are being made, that we're being asked to make a decision with limited amount of information. And everybody across the country is having to do the same thing. They're having to make decisions with limited amount of information. And information changes every, every hour, actually. We're getting new information every time we, you know, you check on any news feed or any other aspect. So the decisions that the foundation makes, that the festival committee makes, is having, we're having to make the best decision we can with the limited amount of information we have. But we want to be a partner with the city. We want to do what the city wants to do. We want to work with the city. We want to be in, arm in arm with the city on this issue. And we know this, we know y'all don't take this lightly in a decision that needs to be made. And we don't either. And we will certainly work with the, with the city. Whatever the decision is that we make today, we will, we will do it as best. Just to give you an idea, when the board was talking earlier in the discussion of what should we do, and it was, we were headed toward, there's a real possibility we may need to cancel, and that the city is going to ask us, what do we want to do? And I'm going to embarrass her, but my wife is on the board, and she literally, she cried, thinking that we wouldn't have the festival. It'll be the first time in 68 years that we haven't had the festival. And that's hard for all of us to take. Those that grew up here know how important it is to the, to the city. And so we don't take it lightly. We're here to answer any questions we can, to discuss with the, with the council and the mayor about it, what we can do. As I said, we're not here to debate it, we're here to discuss it and just see if we can reach a resolution. If there are any questions.
Counsel, before we get to questions, we have someone here from Ballin County EMA. I would like to hear from, I would like to hear from Ms. Gary.
So this is Jenny Gary with the Ballin County EMA, and I asked her to speak today just to what the, what the response is and what the recommendations are across the state from the Alabama Public Health Department. She also did something really awesome and gave you guys some handouts on precautionary measures and things that they are encouraging from the Alabama Public Health Department.
So I am Jenny, and I work for the Ballin County Emergency Management Agency. Our role in this type of situation with the coronavirus is to help, help push the message and support public health and the guidelines that they're putting out by CDC. And so I wanted to make sure that I brought some information to you, just about some of the preventative measures that we can put in place in our community that honestly should be in place each and every day, things that we would do to help prevent the spread of any type of infection or disease, such as influenza or the coronavirus. So just helping to echo that message and encourage people to use good respiratory hygiene, to wash their hands, and so that if the individuals have or think that they have exposure, then they're being asked to separate themselves. And the general rules that we would use even during flu season is, if you're sick, you would stay home and not, not expose others. So there's some guidance there that I just thought would be helpful for you to take a look, to see what would happen through the various phases. Currently, we have no, no confirmed cases in Alabama for the coronavirus. And it talks about things that we can do as a community for planning efforts and bringing together our municipalities, our event organizers. You've touched on all the things that happen around this county. So our role is more of a coordination piece to help the communication between the different departments, the different organizations, just to make sure that we have a situational awareness of what's in the community and the things that you can do to help protect your health and safety.
Does anybody have any questions for Jenny? I know. Floyd, do you have anybody else?
Well, I did want to mention, although we don't actually represent them, the Arts Center is also here. And we actually, you know, the, the festival is the two together, the Arts and Crafts Festival and the Arts Center Festival. And they are here, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but I believe the Arts Center has, is basically, they've been talking with us, and they're like, "We will, we will do what the festival, we want to do what the festival wants to do, too. If it goes forward, they're going to go forward. If it's canceled, I believe they will, they will cancel theirs as well." But I, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn when I say that.
Do we have anybody from the Arts Center that would like to speak?
No, I mean, he's, we've been talking all day, so I don't want to say that.
Is there anyone with the downtown merchants that would like to speak? Yes. Can you come, can you talk to Ms. White? Please.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. White.
I'm just here because I've been a merchant for 24 years, and I'm so, you know, want to be safe and all this. But I feel that, that if we allow the art show to go on, and the people have a choice to come or not come, I think we're all educated in washing our hands and doing what we need to do to stay safe. People that are in that zone where they may have a health risk or something autoimmune disease, they may choose to stay home. But the economic, as you were saying, for our whole county, for our merchants downtown, is huge. I can't even tell you how much money involved for this weekend. So that's all I really have to say.
Thank you, Ms. White. Counsel, I'm going to open the floor to you for questions, but I did want to just kind of lay out a little bit of, a little bit of the scenario here. Oh, I'm sorry. Come on. I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
That's all right. I'm Bryant Whalen, and I'm the executive director of the Eastern Shore Arts Center. I just did want to address a little bit of our economic impact, because our festival, 49 years old, it's, you know, one of our very largest fundraisers. So that's part of our budget, part of our, part of our operating expenses. So for us, it's really part of our livelihood. So we're counting on it. So it's a little bit of a different situation because we need it to keep the lights on. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did I miss anybody? I'm sorry. Anybody else with the Arts Center or the Arts and Crafts Committee? Okay. So counsel, I've heard it mentioned, you know, is the city going to counsel? Let me, let me straighten this out a little bit. First, we don't have the authority to counsel, to, to cancel the Arts and Crafts Festival. We have an agreement or memorandum of understanding with the, it's not committee, with the foundation.
Foundation.
Thank you, that was the word I was looking for, Lang. It allows them the use of the streets. But I've spoken to Lang twice today already, and we want to work together on this. So if it's decided among us that it's not in the best interest, as I understand it, you know, they're not going to hold the fact that we don't want to allow the use of the streets for this, you know, against us. In other words, if we just said, "Well, we can't counsel it, but we're not, we're going to take the streets away from you." We don't want them coming back and saying, "Well, you breached the contract." And they're not interested in doing anything like that. And I have the foundation's word on that. So as far as us saying that we've called it off, I believe it would be up to us to mutually agree to do that. So I just, I want to say, as far as action taken by the council tonight, you know, I don't, I don't think that there would be a resolution, if we walked one on the agenda that said, "We're counseling arts and crafts." We may pass a resolution that says it's, "We feel it's in the, you know, the interest of the city, the health and welfare and the safety of the city to do..." Dot, dot, dot. But that's, that's what that would, that's what that would look like, okay? So I want to kind of clear that up before we move any further. And I'll just open the floor up for questions. Jay, do you want to lead off? Our comments?
Do I want to?
I'm giving you the chance.
Yeah, I mean, this is a no-win situation for everybody involved. You know, and I've kind of really gone back and forth three or four times today on what I thought we should do. And I don't know that I've made my mind up yet. Part of me wants to say, "Let's wait as long as we can to make the decision. Maybe something, maybe there'll be some positive turn." I'm not optimistic on that, but I'd like to be. You know, when you're talking about the economic impact on your community, that's significant. And this is a significant factor for a lot of people in this area. And so it shouldn't be taken lightly, no matter what the decision is. But you have to remember, in that same vein, that you are talking about economics, and that is not to be placed above the health and safety of your community. And that's sort of where the rub is. If we cancel it, will it have a positive impact? Who knows? Will it stop anything? Who knows? I mean, kind of like you said, we're operating with a bunch of unknowns and a bunch of hypotheticals that nobody knows how it's truly going to, to impact anything. And that's what makes it such a tough decision. You know, I monitored this throughout the day and continued to read different things, and it seems to be the snowball has started, and every event from top to bottom across the country is being canceled. And so then the decision becomes, well, do we defy that and have ours because we want it and we need it? Or do we take the same precautions that everybody else seems to be taking and postpone or cancel? And I don't know. I really don't.
Give it.
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and say, you know, as of yesterday morning, I was very firm. I didn't think we should even consider canceling it. And I would say, in 36 hours, my, my position has, has changed on that somewhat. And, you know, I don't think people should, I think the panic is worse than the virus itself in some ways, but there's a difference between going about our regular daily lives and trying to take precautions and having 150,000 to 200,000 people come through our town. I mean, that, we lose control over, we lose a lot of control over what may happen there from a health perspective. And, you know, I read that right before I came up here, Auburn University is sending students home till April the 10th. I mean, this is unprecedented time. NCAA has canceled all sporting events. NBA has suspended the season. I mean, we're not alone in this. I mean, it's awful, because we've had this event for 68 years. I know how important it is to the merchants. Jody Keating, my friend and coworker, has run this event for the last couple of years, co-chaired or been the chairperson. I've witnessed in the last few years how hard the volunteers worked to put this event on. And I mean, they put their heart and soul into this, and it's a year-round process. I mean, this is just kind of like them running a marathon and getting within a mile of the finish line and then having to pull the plug. I mean, they've worked all year round, especially the last couple of months building up to this. And it's heartbreaking to even talk about not getting to put the event on. I don't know. I feel like we can delay, and a week from now, things are probably going to be worse. And I feel like we're certainly going to pull through this. I mean, this is not going to be something that's going to shut down Fairhope or shut down the United States of America for the long haul, but, you know, for the next few months, I mean, it, things are going to be really, really different. And I just think, if you have the event and there's any type of outbreak, whether or not it's, was caused by the event, it's going to get blamed on the event. And that's my, my concern, is I think it'll, you know, the virus will probably come here sometime in the next few weeks. I don't think there's really any stopping that completely. And if we have the event, then the event is going to be blamed for that, whether or not it had anything to do with it. That's, that's my, my position. I mean, I feel horrible for the situation of the merchants. I think this weekend is bigger for them than, than probably any weekend other than, you know, maybe Black Friday and that weekend. So I don't know what we can do to, to come up with another, possibly another event at a different time of year to help offset that, that could be ongoing. I mean, I think, like Lang said, this would be almost impossible to just postpone this event. There's, there's too many moving parts. If you cancel it, you just, you're in it, you're doubling down on next year, I guess. And I don't know, it's a terrible situation to be in. Jay said it's a lose-lose, it really is. I mean, if we have the event and there's any kind of outbreak, it's going to be blamed on the event. If we don't have the event, then the merchants are going to suffer. It's just, we're just not in a good position. But I feel like if we delay this and wait till next week, that might just put everybody in an even worse situation if we cancel, you know, a day or two in advance of the event. So that's where I am right now.
Like you said, you had two vendors that were concerned, but one was quarantined and the other one was concerned.
We've had one that's quarantined, and one, I think, expressed a concern out of the roughly 200 that have, that are in the show right now.
How many of that 200 have you heard from? I mean, everybody, or?
We have also, we have some.
We have been hearing from some saying, "Is it going to be canceled, or are you going to have it?"
Right.
We haven't had any, other than those two, say, "I don't feel comfortable about coming." So I assume they are, they're probably at another show, well, I'm sure they're at another show right now. And they'll be here, you know, and then that show will finish this weekend, and then they'll, they'll head here
Right.
over the week.
I can tell you, there's a huge outpouring of concern from our citizens, and that's really what matters. I mean, I've, I've heard more about this than anything else since we've been in, in office.
I'm sure. And not having time, had time to look through this protocol from the CDC, I mean, what, how much could the city implement of this, you know, getting your events ready? Has the foundation done anything, or, you know, what was passed out?
We've rented more washing stations, just, you know, as a plan B if, because I've, like I said, I've gone through every single like I said, I've gone through every single scenario, both, you know, as, as mayor and as a business person. And I, I just know that I have been getting calls for a long time from a lot of citizens. And what I did this morning is just posted to kind of get some feelers out. And I'd said, it's ninety-nine percent of the people say it's an absolute, you know, responsible call. And I would love to be able to figure out a way to do it again and invest money into the event and try to do it again. But I don't want to put anybody out that's volunteering because I know it's a huge event. And I've been there just as a business person. And I've had very large-scale events, you know, canceled for, for whatever reason. And it's, it's terrible.
Right.
But this isn't about economics, unfortunately. This is about the health of our citizens.
When you say economics, I guess there's two ways to look at that. Lang, what-
I was just going to say, prior to knowing that this was going to be on the, on the agenda tonight, we had already begun working because of the, the national news and everything. And we had prepared to have hand sanitizers, hand washing stations in and around the area just to help that, which is one of the, one of the things that public health says, you know, is one of the best ways to try to ward it off. Of course, you know, you can't make everybody that comes in, go wash their hands before they come into the festival, I know.
Right.
But we, we've been trying to be proactive to try to ward off some of those potential issues.
Right.
But it's not a guarantee.
That's right.
We know it's not a guarantee.
Well, there's no guarantee, there's no guarantee in life, right?
Death and taxes are the two I've heard of.
And so I kind of, you know, follow along with what Ms. White said, you know, the downtown merchants that are going to be affected, the vendors that are coming to this show, you know, leave it up to the individuals that, you know, if they feel that their, their health is in danger. Jimmy and Jay said, you know, we, there's probably going to be somebody who gets the coronavirus. There might be somebody that's got it now. We don't know. Is it going to be because of the art show? Who knows? But we do know the effect if we cancel it on the individual families that receive revenue from this weekend, that allow them to pay bills and feed their kids. So that's kind of the way I look at it. If you don't want to come, don't come.
George?
I look at it a little differently. This is probably one of my favorite events since I've been a kid living here. I mean, I love this event. But it does bring in a hundred thousand people from all over the country. And the disease is real. And it is all over the country. And I think it'd be irresponsible of the city to go ahead and put this event on, knowing this information. And so if it comes down to a vote, I feel we need to cancel the event. I mean, times are tough and life's hard. I hate it. I really, I really hate it. It's a tough decision. But I can't put money above the safety and well-being of the city fair enough. So I believe I feel, I feel necessary, it's necessary to, to cancel since we can't postpone.
Well, I've, pretty much, everybody's covered all the points. But I've anguished over this. And it didn't take me, yesterday, you said yesterday, you were, you know, you no doubt you were in favor of it. I actually woke up this morning that I was still in favor of it. But with the, with the multiple closings of events, schools throughout the country, businesses, there's not a, probably not many municipal governments, not many boardrooms that didn't have to have this conversation over the last, you know, several weeks, probably in this country, probably over the last one week. And, you know, it goes back to what Jay led us off with, is darned if you do and you're darned if you don't. There's no, there's no good answer here for all the reasons stated. And I, I was, I was firmly in favor of it. But I believe today, I may have changed my mind. And that's after hearing from several merchants that gave me real stories about how it impacts their livelihood and how it impacts their, you know, being able to take care of their children. And that's sad. It's, it's a very, very difficult decision. It's not a, not a decision that is any fun to make. As council, as mayor, it's not, it's not been very fun today. And I know that probably nobody put their phone down the entire day. I've been on the phone all day, hearing from people and talking about this. And, but, you know, I've ran all the numbers. I'm sure that there are people that have the virus that aren't showing symptoms, they're asymptomatic. And I've ran all the math and, you know, and even if the numbers are, you know, concerning, say, mortality rate, even if they're not accurate, maybe the rate's a lot lower. But it could still be a lot greater than, than the seasonal flu. We just don't know. And that's, unfortunately, we don't have all the science behind this now. And so there you come in as a risk factor there. And because of the unknown, I don't want to have to say that we put money ahead of health of the people. Although, we would never prove whether or not having that festival caused one person to be sick or not. I mean, there's going to be somebody that, if we had it, that's going to be at that festival that's ultimately probably going to get sick. But if it was one of our loved ones and, you know, God forbid someone, you know, pass away from that, you know, I don't know that I want that on my conscience.
You know, your decision or our decision is similar to what we have to do when there's a hurricane coming. And unfortunately, we have to make the decision beforehand. And we never know whether it's going to turn into a category five or it's going to fizzle out or it's going to go somewhere else. And we tell everybody to leave. And then it fizzles out. They go, God, what a dumb decision that was to make us leave. But as soon as somebody stays and it turns into a category five and we lose them, then it's like, oh, what a dumb decision that was not to tell them to, to leave. And, and we're kind of doing the same thing here. I understand.
Well, to come back to the same, I think the same conclusion that most of the people across this country have come to. And that is that you err on the side of caution. And that's what you're doing with a hurricane?
The only difference with the hurricane is that you can make the decision to evacuate and save yourself and come back. But we're bringing hundreds of thousands of people here. It's, it is different.
I agree. Well, I just meant-
Oh, I know.
-having to make the decision before we-
The decision is tough regardless.
And that's what makes it so much more difficult is that we are bringing a couple hundred thousand people here. And, you know, this is not New York City where they may have a parade of a thousand or five thousand or ten thousand people. That's a small percentage there. But here, it's a two hundred thousand is, I mean, it's ten times the population of our city.
I'll be honest with you, I'm a gambler at heart. I mean, I'm very raw. And, you know, again, I'm still young.
Well, we're businessmen, so you're a gambler.
I'm still young. Some people disagree with that.
You're in that category.
I still think I'm pretty, I'm pretty healthy. But the point, my point is, not so much as me. But if I were to think for one minute that I allowed this to happen and one person got it, irregardless of if it came from this deal or not, and he died, I'd have a hard time living with that, the fact that I voted for people to come here. I really would. And that's what I've been thinking about. And so, you know, they may get here and people may die. But I don't, it's like, kind of like you condoned it. And I just don't want to be, I don't want to be put in that position. If I can be, get myself out of that position by voting not to cancel, then that's what I'm going to have to do. Because I, you know, it's kind of like if we didn't, if we didn't do it and nobody got sick, that'd be great. And, you know, we're not going to have this conversation on if we did or didn't because it was a great deal, nobody got it. If, you know, if we had it and somebody got sick, now we're in this conversation. That's not a good conversation I want to be in.
Yeah.
House President?
No.
I understand that it's health, safety and welfare consideration. But as far as like the city corporation, we've still got a contract with the foundation. And I understand everybody's wanting to march with one step, you know, lockstep and be on the same page. We want to make sure that the, that the foundation understands and also the city understands that if it's canceled, that the city's not going to consider that a breach of the contract that we have with the foundation, which will be ongoing from year to year, that we would have to terminate it down for cost. Nor would the foundation consider the city's, you know, decision, so to speak, or at least their guidance, that they not have it as a breach either. So it'd be basically a mutual suspension of that contract for a period of twelve months or however long we all, you know, if you want to do it ninety days or whatnot, if you find that, that neither party would consider that a breach of that, that agreement that we have. Because we're obligated to put this on for the, for the foundation. And, but we don't want that, you know, any part here to be considered a breach. And we don't want them to, you know, we don't want, if they decide they don't, you know, that it's the ultimate call that they've got to make as a body of the city council, we don't want to make that a termination event for their contract moving forward.
Yeah. Well, there's, that memorandum of understanding, there is consideration that goes both ways in that. And there, there are things that the foundation has agreed to do for the city that obviously if there is no, if there is no festival, there would be no obligation on the foundation to perform those actions for the city also.
Yeah. I'm kind of a separate guy. Who's in charge? Who says it's on or who says it's off? The foundation, which I can certainly understand that, or the city?
Well, right now, I think from what Justice Warren was saying is that they want guidance from us as far as which of those considerations is. And if they as a board have got to make that statement off well.
Well, and, and that's why we felt we wanted this to be a discussion and a mutual agreement. Because we are in charge of the festival.
Right.
The foundation is. But without streets, there is no festival. So if the city didn't want to give us the streets, then we couldn't have the festival anyway. So you have some authority because you own the streets. I mean, you loaned them to us for the weekend, but you own the streets. We have the festival rights. So, and I agree with Marcus. We, we had talked earlier and I said, Marcus, whatever happens today, if it turns out to be a cancellation, the festival, the, the foundation absolutely will not hold the city responsible for any recommendation that it makes under that MOU. And all we're asking is the same consideration from the, from the council and the mayor is that you not consider us if we go in with you and say, okay, we understand we need to cancel this year, that that not be considered a breach of, of our MOU? That's all we're saying.
I know he's not smiling. I nearly considered that.
I know.
That's why, that's why you had me.
I guess so.
Yeah, I know, I know.
I mean, it's an extraordinary situation.
And unfortunately-
Hopefully, something will never happen.
And we're trying to save lives here.
Unfortunately, us lawyers know that we are all not always here. Sometimes there could be someone else sitting in your seat and they may decide a different, a different decision. And so that's why we just wanted to kind of make sure we had that, that cleared. We are one hundred percent in agreement with the city that, that, you know, no one's doing anything that could be considered a breach.
Put you on the spot. You, you've given the facts, but do you have an opinion?
Do I have an opinion? That sounds like something Jay would say. Do I have an opinion?
Does the foundation have an opinion?
The, the foundation is agreeable completely to go with the city. And if it appears that the city, the council's position is that it probably, we should go with the safety aspect of canceling, we are, we are completely in agreement with that. With a lot of, well, a lot of tears, let me just say that.
Hey, join the club, brother.
Yeah. It, it is not something we want to do. Sometimes, you know, sometimes you've got to do something that you don't want to do, but you got to do it. I did it for years when I'd have something in front of me. I didn't really want to do it that way, but I just had to. And I think that's what the city is facing. I don't think there's anybody at this table that doesn't want the festival to occur. The question is, in this day and time, with the information we have in front of us, is that the right thing to do, is to have it occur? And, and the, the foundation is, you know, I guess we're here between the chicken and the egg. Who's going to say first what they want to do? But, but based on the conversations I've heard from the council members and from the mayor, it's my understanding that if we technically said that we need to cancel, that that's, that is consistent with the council's position of what you would like for us to do.
I want to bring up one more consideration as well. Because we talked about the domino effect, or you talked about the domino effect throughout the county. Well, I'm looking at some members in the audience. It reminds me of the domino effect in the city as well. You're going to have barbecue put on by the fire department at the end of the month. There may be other events that are being held at the civic center. What's going to be our stance on that? Are we going to, you know, are we going to ask them to counsel? We going to leave it up to them? How's that going to look?
I would, well, let me just, sorry. I would, I would think that it's, it's not a blanket approach. I think each, each individual event is probably a little different. I mean, obviously, the biggest concern that we have with arts and crafts is how many people come here from outside of here. And it's not a couple of thousand.
We don't want a small crowd.
It's a volume-based, you know, for example, though you mentioned, I think you mentioned barbecue cook-off. Well, that's a relatively small local event. Now, is it more than five hundred, which you're recommended not to have at this point? I don't know.
I'm a little close.
And so, you know, I think it's-
You know, the, the pros and cons are, an outdoor event generally appears to be a safer environment than an indoor. If you look at the NBA, the basketball, they, they, those are all enclosed arenas.
Right.
And so that's a bigger risk than an open air. But the larger crowds is a bigger risk. So, you know, you, that's why we said we wanted to come and just talk and discuss it and, and look at all the pros and cons to whichever way we decide to go.
You know, just thinking of something that, you know, is such a negative topic, but that could be a potential positive takeaway or light at the end of the tunnel. You brought up the MOU. And right now, we've got an MOU that's in place and I guess renegotiated. How, do you know how often that-
It was a three-year.
I wonder if there's something we could do for the foundation to make that a more permanent standing MOU. Or maybe you negotiate the terms inside, you know, there's additional terms inside.
I think that's a great idea.
But where you at least have, let's lock it down for a longer period. This group works so hard.
Me too.
I, I think we should look at giving something to the foundation that they can take away and say, you know what, we hate this situation, but man, we feel good that we were able to address this issue and, and walk away with something positive out of this. A longer-term permanent MOU.
I'm not taking a, I don't think I'm taking a big leap of faith to say that the foundation absolutely would, would welcome the opportunity to do that. Absolutely.
Trust me that we appreciate the tone that you brought into the meeting. It could have, it could have gone much differently based on the approach that was taken. And nothing, and nothing, nothing about this is easy.
It certainly is not.
Oh, it's not. I know. I know it's not easy for anybody sitting at this table.
Let me cut in for a moment. I get some texts coming in now. Scott Harris, who's the head of the government task force for this, is recommending canceling all events of five hundred or more in Alabama.
Yeah, that was earlier this morning.
He's live right now.
It happened this morning, too.
Is that indoor or is that anywhere?
It's, I think it's anywhere. I don't think he specified.
He didn't specify.
Okay. So council, just to, maybe, is there-
I know. I guess you're in a work session, so technically you don't vote during this.
We can take a straw poll.
But, you know, it, it helps the foundation to know. The, the foundation has already had a couple of meetings by conference call and all today. And they're going to meet again right now when we walk out of here so that we could let you know officially for the city council meeting. But it does go a long way knowing what, what probable vote or whatever is going to come out of the council meeting will be.
That's what I'm trying to get you.
Yeah, thank you.
Jay, you were torn?
I don't know that I've heard anything in the last thirty minutes that convinces me one way or the other. You know, if I, if I had my choice, I'd say postpone it. But if that's not an option and you're forced to make a decision right now based on what we just heard about the cancel five hundred people or more, then I'd say cancel.
With all due respect, heavy heart, I'd say cancel. I like to sleep well at night. Get in my hamster.
I would say have it.
I'd say with a very heavy heart, cancel.
I kind of like Jay's words, postpone it.
I promise you, we will do whatever we can to come up with a logistical way to do it. You cannot do it without artists. And if their schedule puts it in such a way that you can't do it, regardless of the weather, regardless of, of, you know, the, the city giving us the streets on another day or whatever, or, or the date. And we still got to figure out, how long is this issue that's causing us to do this? How, how far out are we going to be? I mean, we tried to schedule it a month from now and we're even- I mean, we try to schedule it a month from now and we're in a worse situation, we're going to be right back here talking about it again.
But if you push it out, if you push it out six months, you're on top of planning for the next one.
Doing the next one, so.
Well, I was going to say...
But we won't, we don't, I didn't mean to interrupt.
Oh, no, I was just going to say, you know, back to school is in August, so that's never a good time. But there really is nothing in September. I mean, I think early September, if it was even a consideration, I think that gives you enough time in between potentially. And I think the city, I know I would, yeah.
Have a heat stroke.
This was not a postponement deal, you were saying.
I'm saying, I could come back with an official position, well...
And you can't figure out a date.
I never, I never shut the door, but it will be, the first thing we've got to do is find out, can we get the artist? You know, that, you know, because they're going all over, some of them, like you're saying, how many different states do we have in fall?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five different states. So, we don't know what their summer, fall, you know, and then we've got other things that you're going to get into when you get into September. A few folks like football and, you know.
People come out for March.
They will. I mean, you know, we have, so we'll have, we can't promise that we can postpone it. We will certainly make every effort to see what we can do, but we're going to be realistic about it because we can't put a bunch of, another $10,000 toward it to find out that we still got the same problem.
I would say the economic impact and the city paying for the advertising and those things would be a huge and good investment. And I think it's long enough ahead that we would know more. It would be hard to do two months and we don't know if two months we're going to be in the same vote.
The theory of getting it in a hot month and it goes away like the flu, you can find out for sure in June, July.
We don't know.
Who wants to have it out in the streets at 95, 98 degrees?
We'll be glad to put together all the pros and cons on a postponement versus... But we were just, right now, we were focused, because of the short time period, focused on canceling as in canceling next weekend. And the reason why it's important today is 6:00 AM Saturday morning is when we're supposed to mark the streets for the tents. So, I guess I get to sleep a little bit later if it goes the direction I think it's going.
So, Marcus, do we need to have them, I think they have enough foundation members here. Do they need to come back to us and present us with anything? Do we need to take any further action? See, if they cancel, technically, there's no damages to us. There's no, maybe not any action needed on our part. But, I mean, you know, I don't know that we have to take an action to cancel the use of the streets if they're not going to have it. I mean, it's just not going to happen.
They would just notify us of that at some point if they want to just do a resolution or have to do it.
Well, I think they could even give us a vote, maybe just give it to us in writing if you're worried about it. I mean, I know you're not worried about it, but just to be formal about it.
We would like, I think it's important that we make a statement, you know, because we've got artists, but we've got local people that... And I know a lot of people are concerned about this, but I've heard from a lot of people saying, you need to have it, you know, that we've always had. So, there are people that come both sides of this thing. And so, I think we need to be able to put out a statement. If that's acceptable with the council, we'll put a statement out on it, maybe a little late, but...
Might be already out, but...
Yeah. I don't know if we can put, I don't know if I can put the hayback in there.
We could let the first 499 people in. Let the first 499 people in.
All right.
We never close it. Yeah, yeah, we'll keep going. Okay, all right. Anything else from me?
Sorry.
Thank you too much, everyone. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, golf course presentation. Lynn, we've got a few minutes for this.
If we only have two minutes for this, we'll go on to the next one.
We've got about, which one would you rather do, the golf course or the marina? Choose one.
Golf will take more than two minutes.
Jeff's here.
Yeah, it'll still take more than two minutes.
Pat's here.
Yeah, it will. And I can wait if you need to make a change.
Well, we've got an agenda meeting to go through too. We'll just go with golf if you're here. Yeah. We've got maybe 10, 12 minutes.
I'll talk fast.
Should we sign up, is she to speak?
No, sir. Or you want to speak in the work session or in the council meeting?
Council meeting.
Now, there's a public participation at the beginning. You don't have to sign up for that.
I also want to end for anything.
Yeah, agenda item.
The one in the beginning is for the agenda item.
Right, that's the one I'm here.
I want to make sure I know how to operate this thing right.
I think he has to get to that screen.
Joe, you want to get, there, thank you very much.
You can hand it to me, I'll show you how to do it.
Okay, you have a job. In my other life as a volunteer, I've gotten involved with the Rock Creek Golf Course Sale, representing the, on a committee representing the three POAs. And because of that, I did some research on golf and where it's headed and what it's doing now and where it's been over the last decade or so. And it's trending down. Thank you very much. Does it stay on? Okay. And that led me to Quail Creek. With a business that is trending down nationally, it made me start thinking about Quail Creek and what we're going to do there. So, earlier this year, I asked Jeff to run a report on how many annual pass holders we have. And understanding that they are on a rotating basis, we can get an annual pass holder count that varies a little bit because you're in between, some people have expired and renewed and that sort of thing. But at that time, we had 443 pass holders, 27 of whom are not seniors. This is a statistic that's fairly typical of the industry today. And as we look at Quail Creek as an amenity for the citizens and wanting to build it and keep it there for families and friends, we have to take a look at what's going on and why we have so many seniors versus so few newer generations. And what's happening are the millennials and the Gen X are not playing golf in the same numbers as the seniors. And Gen Z will be very close behind them. According to them, golf, four and a half hours is too long, has too many rules, and is too traditional. These are generations who want things to happen fast, they want to have fun.
I was thinking which category I fit into, so.
Yeah, we're checking on that. So, now you have an industry that is trying to attract non-traditional generations to a game that is all about tradition. And that's tough. So, how do we attract a demographic that prefers informality, wants things to happen quickly, and craves variety in the entertainment, everything that golf is not? And I'm a golfer and I willingly, willingly say that.
I like where this is going.
Now, nationally, across the nation, clubs are getting very inventive and the industry is supporting their efforts. They are allowing music on the course, which would drive me crazy. They're selling six holes instead of nine or 18 to make it a shorter game, take less time. They are opening up foot golf courses. That's almost like soccer on the course. They have disc golf courses, and of course, we already have one at Volanta Park. They're providing automatic mobile check-in, which is just fantastic. That means they bypass the pro shop and there go some pickup sales. Self-serve restaurants, they're trying that. Or they're trying a variety of restaurants. Or if you're a private club, they're trying a member-for-a-day program. Anything to get the millennials and the Gen X into the game and start it. On the other hand, off-course participation has increased tremendously because they spend less time and there is an entertainment factor to it. Topgolf, most of you have heard about it, is phenomenal. Topgolf.
I just thought everybody's heard of it.
Yeah, well, okay, everybody but Kevin has heard about Topgolf.
I've only heard of it the last three years.
And they have a big entertainment factor. Plus, it's something you can go and you can hit as many balls as you want or not. You can spend however much time you want or however little time. But they've got an entertainment factor built into it. And that satisfies these younger generations. But frankly, we have a hard time figuring out how any of these will fit into Quail Creek. We don't see the solutions for the clubhouse. We don't see selling six holes. You can't get off our course at the sixth hole without disrupting other players. And facilities like Topgolf, which are multimillion-dollar facilities, are just way too expensive to even consider. So, faced with generations with the need to maximize a recreation time, how do we capture them and their children? How do we hold their interest? How do we keep golf a vital and growing amenity for the Fairhope families? We know that golf is a family sport, a social event, and a lifetime sport. But the younger generations are not going to find that out if we don't get them out there, if we don't show them how they can afford the game, how they can have time for golf, and how golf can improve the quality of their life. Quail Creek can offer a more accessible version of golf to capture this potential market. We can increase our revenues and we can grow the game to support our facility. We own land that we are not using, yet we are spending over $16,000 a year to maintain it. And we're getting absolutely nothing for it. That is property directly across from the golf course, the clubhouse, excuse me. It's time to put this property to work for us. A par-three academy course serves multiple purposes. It fills the need for a less expensive round of golf. It fills the need for a quicker game of golf. It serves as a teaching course. It provides nursery greens, which is a cost savings for us. It serves as a great practice course and as a short game improvement course. It is perfect as a summer golf camp facility, a program we don't yet have. We have clinics, but those kids don't get the opportunity to get out on a course and learn the skills and learn some of life skills, the manners, the honesty, the integrity that golf teaches children today. And it provides for specialized tournaments. Imagine what kind of fun you can have on a par-three tournaments. And it's a great place for night golf, which is a huge trend. And there is nothing in the area like this. Now, before our team goes to explain, we have worked up a cost, an estimated cost. We've worked up an annual cost and we've worked up an estimated revenue. I want you to know that we can build this with impact fees that we have on hand. Pat has them and he has enough to do this. And it doesn't cost taxpayers anything to provide them with something that they can enjoy and enhance their lives. And Jeff?
So...
You'll start.
Sure. So, for those that aren't familiar, the parcel of land in question is adjacent to the cart barn. And what it is, can you hear me okay? It's a hundred yards by a hundred-yard parcel that runs along the roadside of Quail Creek Drive and adjacent to the cart barn, which is ideal to do this. Looking at the map, I hope you can see it okay. It would be a golf course that would be a three-hole loop and it would run counterclockwise from the right-hand side. First hole would be approximately 70 yards long, second hole in the back about 90, the third hole coming back about 70 to 80 yards as well. The reason I selected a counterclockwise loop is it would protect any traffic coming down Quail Creek Drive or walkers that frequent down the road as well. The barrier netting would be about 40 feet high, which is very, very common for a driving range or a par-three type area. I did one myself in New York about 20 years ago and it was a great success. Fees I'll get into in just a second. But I think you'll find they're very, very minimal for what we're talking about and impact fees most likely would pay for the entire thing. Any questions about the map? Okay, so as far as fees go, I've spoken to many suppliers for netting, lights, a starter shack, things like that, benches, cups, flags, et cetera. And total fees, we'd be looking at about $60,444. And that would be your total construction cost and supplies to get going. On the next page, on the estimated annual expenses.
Can you back it up one time?
Sure. Actually, we're a little less on those estimated costs because we would be using the net poles for the lights, Jeff?
Oh, right, right, okay.
So, we took that cost out.
Right, okay.
You're saying you put all the lighting for $4,000?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pol, electricalize that?
Uh, yes. And because it's kind of a minimal property, it's only 100 by 100, the lighting requirements really wouldn't be that much.
Sorry, it's small.
Hey, no problem.
It's the Excel sheet.
Every time I hear lights and electricity, I hear ching-ching. That was my question.
Well, don't forget, we do have electricity over there already because of the cart barn. So, it's, we're not reinventing the wheel here.
And then, annual expenses would be fairly minimal as well. A lot of our hours would be governed by the pro shop staff. So, when people come by to pay for a green fee, they'd be required to go to the pro shop, pay for their green fee, go over to the course and play. We do have supervision right there. I have got my cart staff, I've got myself. The maintenance barn is right by, so if anybody ever needed help or had questioning, staff would be trained to help them out that way. Staffing would be very minimal in addition to what we have right now because it would really be Friday, Saturday, Sunday nights, just three hours, which is about 150 days per year that we'd have to do any staffing. So, very, very minimal. Additional fertilizer, chemicals, electricity, things of that nature. Total annual expenses would be about $11,000.
Let me stop you right there. You've got fertilizer, chemicals, water, and electricity included. You've got the staff, $10,100. But you said to maintain it right now, $16,000 a year.
It is, it is.
You're saving $6,000 a year?
No, no, no.
Annual expenses by putting a golf course, three holes in?
No, currently, that's what we spend to maintain that property.
That's what I'm saying. So, you're going to maintain three holes for 6,000 less a year?
No, this $11,000 would be extraneous of what we're spending right now.
But then we're not, yeah, but we're not then spending all of that 16,000 either because we're not mowing all of this. We're not mowing the fairway part of it all the time. We won't be mowing the tees because they're going in with artificial turf because they take a lot of beating. And it isn't worth the money to build up tee boxes. So, we'll use artificial turf so they don't get cared for. The biggest maintenance that would be coming from that original 16,000 is mowing the greens plus what we've got going on here. So, there is a savings from what we're doing now.
Okay. And then, as far as estimated revenue, I'm kind of doing this myself based on a project I had in New York 20 years ago in a rural area of state New York, which population base is pretty much like what we have in Fairhope and Daphne area. And I figure we might have 300 days a year we can do this due to weather. Maybe I'm being optimistic, but I'm hoping for 300. Typically, you would have about 20 participants a day and that can range anywhere from school trips, children coming out with parents, seniors coming out as couples to learn how to play golf. But I think 20 people per day would be a pretty, pretty fair estimate of what we would do. Typical green fees that I think we could command would be about $5 for a nine-hole loop. Retail sales in addition to that, with a starter shed or the clubhouse next door. People will buy snacks, drinks, tees, golf gloves, et cetera. The national average for the National Golf Foundation for a participant at a golf course for a public facility would be about $4.50. I pared that down to about $2 on the short course and I think that would be a pretty, a pretty fair estimate. And then, other residual sales and your total revenue for the year, probably looking at about $60,000 for an estimated profit of $48,700. So, it could be a little cash cow. I've seen that before when I was at my facility in New York. And like Lynn had mentioned, there's nothing like it in the area. If you're brand new and you want to learn how to play golf... you want to learn how to play golf. A golf course can be a little intimidating. So, for children to go on the golf course at any time of day with better players breathing down their necks right behind them, it can be tough. So, I think it's kind of a unique situation that is conducive to learning, conducive to relaxation, and also great for a working person who doesn't have a lot of time. And the big, the big, I guess, gripe about golf nowadays is most people work 40, 50, 55 hours a week and have families, have bills to pay, and don't have the time or the money sometimes to devote to golf, and this would be a unique experience for everybody.
In addition to which, we can sell an annual fee pass to this course, which would be great for the kids. And we'll have, Jeff's already having birthday parties on the patio. He gets them out on the range and maybe on the putting green, but now they'll have a chance to have a birthday party, play out there, have a real game, and then come back. There are a lot of opportunities for an academy course like this that I think we're ready for. I think it makes sense for us to do. We need to build the business, we need to build future players. Seniors are not going to be here forever. I'm one of them. I know I'm not going to be playing golf 20 years from now, but Quail Creek will be around 20 years from now, and we want customers. We want to build that base. So, what do we get out of this besides Pat getting a project that he loves? We get night golf, something new and something fun, something that can be done by families, something that can be done with groups of friends and have a good time. We get a summer golf camp for our kids. We haven't done that. We have summer camp up at Volanta, we've got football camp, we've got it all. But we don't have a golf camp for kids, and I think that's something we can use. We'll get some fun par-three challenges, some tournaments there. But most important of all, we'll get new golf customers.
Jeff, these holes, these other executive golf courses that you are familiar with, are they all, are the holes always this short? And these are...
No, sir, no.
I mean, 70, 80, and 90 yards is, for a lot of people, take a wedge and a putter. I mean, that's, that's all you need.
Yes, I think it's more of...
You might stretch it out, you might need, if you're a kid or elderly, you might need four clubs for that.
This is not a club, this is not a course for woods at any point in time. It's strictly irons.
It's not even, it's only very, very short irons. I mean, it's really not even, it's not even the length of a typical par-three.
Well, I can give you a good case in point. In Myrtle Beach, there is a golf course called The Cane Patch, and typical hole is 50, 60, 70 yards. They are packed morning, noon, and night, lighted, and it is a cash cow. It's been in Myrtle Beach, in central Myrtle Beach, for about 30 years, and every time I've been there on vacation, you wait. And the longest hole they had was about 100 yards, so...
Improve your short game.
Good example.
Well, yeah.
Oh, it will.
My point was, it's really, for a lot of golfers, it's not improve your short game, it's improve one club.
Well, now, I will admit, you know, this is, it's noted as phase one, but you know, we own all of the property beyond that and running down behind the houses on that side of the street that initially was going to be for a nine-hole golf course. I'm not saying now, I'm not saying in the next five years, but we have the opportunity, if this takes off, to expand this and to build more holes. And they can be longer, they can be shorter, they can be any variety. But this is the beginning.
I do, you know, if you light one ball field, and you know, if you're lighting this up 100, 100 yards by 100 yards, that's probably larger than, say, the Dixie Majors Field or Dixie Boys Field out there. It's probably roughly 300-foot fence, but it's not 300 feet wide. The thing about the lights around that, I don't know if you could do it for 4,000, but I also was going to ask about the nets being 40 feet high. Because everybody is using a wedge, it's a high shot. I mean, is that, is that adequate? I mean, is that accurate?
Yeah, I think it would be because your tee area is going to be so close to the net. It's only going to be about 10 feet, 12, 15 feet away, where anything that goes diagonal is going to catch that netting. And going counterclockwise, they're working away from the road after that. So, once you play number one, you're hitting back toward, I guess, the north, I guess.
Yeah, two's not bad, three's really scary. Coming back right to the road, right? You're having netting all along the road.
No, 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 three, no, three would be coming back down the left-hand side, the northern side, I guess, going toward the cart barn.
That's a good...
You've got to be careful. The first one's west to east.
Oh, that's one.
Yeah, so one is adjacent or parallel to Quail Creek Drive with a 40-foot net...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Adjacent to the tee, so...
I was looking at the...
No, that's okay, no, it's kind of hard to tell.
I was thinking the road was at the bottom, you know, I see...
Yeah, the road is right.
It's right.
Mm-hmm. Exactly.
Well, I like the concept, but I'm going to guess that the numbers are probably optimistic. It's probably going to cost more to get it put in, it's probably not going to make as much money as you think, and it'll probably cost more to maintain. How much money do we have in that particular bucket of impact fees? Do you have enough to cover this if it's above and beyond?
So, I have two that have been, you know, purpose in this year's budget. One is for concrete gridding to go on the hillside at Volanta where we have the erosion issues beyond the Dixie Field. But we're currently in plans to redo all of our parking, renovate all that area, so I don't see the point in spending $23,000 of impact fee money on that. The other thing is expanding the tennis court parking lot. We have budgeted $91,000 for asphalt, which I would rather do something more permeable like a crushed limestone-type parking lot rather than asphalt at the tennis center.
On a business side of it, let's assume you doubled your expenses and you cut your revenue in half and two. You're still looking at four years before you turn a profit. And that's a good business deal on anybody's part.
Mm-hmm, sure is.
So, that's, you know, these numbers are so low, you know, even if you double one and split the other one, you're still within a five business margin as far as the numbers were.
No, he's got my copy.
Council, questions, comments?
I feel like we've got, you know, sports that are growing as it is, we're trying to accommodate and to put impact money on to trying to get somebody to participate in something might be a little, I mean, I understand trying to grow the game to support the course, but we don't know what that outcome's going to be. I mean, I like the concept, but I think trying to fit three holes on that little parcel might be a little much. You get three people out there, you know, making a rotation. Somebody else shows up, you know what?
Well, that's why we rely on Jeff, he's done this before, so...
Yeah, well, it would actually be 12 people in the rotation. So, you'd have four on, you know, a maximum of four of four people on each tee going around, and it's so quick, you should be able to finish each hole in five minutes. So, typical person coming out might play nine, so you're looking at 45 minutes or sooner. If you're a skilled golfer, probably a half an hour.
But if there's other teams that are starting hole one, then you wind up being four deep teams on hole one as you're coming around and then people line up to start.
That would be a great problem to have.
It's basically...
If you're peeing off on number two and somebody's teeing off on number one, I hope you're accurate.
They don't, no woods allowed.
I hope you know they're within 10 yards, you're going to get popped.
It's basically a small investment.
It doesn't show, well, actually, it doesn't show in here, there would be a barrier netting in between as well, so from one green to two tee.
So, you can bank it off the net and get it on the green?
Yeah, the cost, yeah, there you go. But the cost would allow for a 15-foot by maybe 20-yard barrier net to, to protect people on the tee.
I think the real...
Have a bucket of balls or something.
I think the real attraction to Topgolf is obviously you can play night golf, so people can go out there when they get off of work and hit at night. And also, obviously, the real attraction is you can have wings and beer.
You're going for a tiki bar next, huh?
Why not?
We're going to save that for the marina first.
I would guess, I would guess Topgolf's liability is a little higher than ours. There's no alcohol here.
I bet there will be. All right. Anybody else have any questions or comments? I kind of want to think about it myself, kind of.
Okay, we should advise you that, you know, we would love to get it up and running. If we were to start it now, it would be August before it was ready to be used. It would be nice to get it up and running for the new fiscal year, if possible.
I personally can't, I can't, I can't give an answer right now.
I'm within reasonable time.
Yeah, within a reasonable time, yeah. Anybody else? Well, I like the concept. I mean...
I think it would be popular.
I think it would be very popular, and I think we would find night golf going more than Friday, Saturday, Sunday before very long, especially in the summer.
Very family-oriented, for sure.
Yeah, I think it would be very family-oriented. The idea that kids might get out there and play golf and drag their parents into it is a possibility.
Anybody else? All right, let's, let's hold off on the marina.
Okay.
We've got, we took right out of almost 30 minutes on that. And I want to look through this agenda real fast.
You did a very good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Council, I was asking you to look through that agenda. Number five is self-explanatory, that's the red plan. Number two, number six, we talked about last meeting. Number seven, Lynn, are you going to be here to speak to number seven? Or Sean, about the marina? Who's going to speak about the clubhouse, Lynn, on number 13? If we need to have questions, Richard?
You take the technical stuff, I can take color.
You want to just tell us about that in one quick minute, and we won't have to ask you, Lynn, number 13? Complete the renovations.
It's strictly painting and new carpeting.
Is this inside?
Inside. And it's going to end up repairing, there's some law lords that has got some little problems solved and it's been repaired.
But I believe this action item is just the painting and the paint and repair the wall, I think, or whatever.
No, no carpeting involved in this.
Yeah, it's just interior.
It's just the carpeting becomes the next step after the painting. All of it is in the project.
Okay. Is anybody going to have any questions on 14 for the owner control for the new?
I'd like to speak to eight and go.
Is anybody going to have any questions on 15? Talk to the mayor about that too, if you need to, I think you could ask her. All right, I think we're good. Let's go ahead and adjourn, and we'll start back in about five minutes.